I want to welcome along some of you, and you know who you are. We have been seeing each other quite a bit. I feel like we should form a club. But I want to thank you for being here and devoting yet another evening to the town of Hartswell. I'm going to ask my compatriot Dan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll just pass this around. I want to ask Howard if he will step up and be a full voting member tonight. Thank you. We have a quorum. I'm going to ask the board members to introduce themselves. Everyone at the table. We have Mark Ironman, the town planner.
Courtney Snelling.
Courtney Snelling, the planning board. Amy Hyble, planning board.
Dan Holbeck, planning board.
Howard Levitt, planning board.
All right, thank you all. We have, we have four items on the agenda tonight, but one of the items, Item D, Amendment of the Definitions Addendum and Shoreland Zoning Ordinance dealing with commercial fishing, cannot be taken up tonight because the town's legal review is not complete. It's not that we won't be taking it up, it's just that we have some unfinished business with the town attorney who's taking a look at it. But I'm sure that it will be back in front of us in the not-too-distant future. The first item is the repeal of the current floodplain management ordinance and adoption of a replacement floodplain management ordinance. We have to repeal it and then replace it. So you've all been looking at the flood insurance maps. And I just want to say, Mark is going to top talk a lot, and we really want to hear from you if you have comments about it. But these ordinances and updates are required for the town to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program helps to subsidize the cost to purchase flood insurance for individual homeowners and families and their properties. And having a flood insurance property, as you all know from this past winter, helps to protect against the costs of damage due to storms, which we are very familiar with now. If the town decides not to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, the ramifications to the citizens of the town are severe. It means that you will not be able to purchase flood insurance for your home, and if you have a current policy, it will not be renewed. So the consequences are fairly dire. If you need a mortgage, you can get a mortgage, and most of us have mortgages. So the new maps are part of the new ordinance. So they, the maps and the ordinance are one thing, and they will be considered at a special town meeting. The Select Board will set the date of that meeting, probably at its meeting tomorrow. The planning board's job at this level hearing is to hear your comments and then refer the ordinance to the Select Board. So that's what we'll do. Mark, would you like to make some comments?
The town currently has a floodplain management ordinance and a series of what are called FURs, floodplain insurance... flood insurance rate maps, which delineate the areas that are called technically special flood hazard areas, commonly referred to as the 100-year floodplain. Those maps were prepared in, I think it's 1986. If you've ever had to use them, you would find that they are highly inaccurate. The roads aren't where they are. The shoreline doesn't match what the other maps are. But those are the maps that the town currently uses to say, are you in or out of a flood hazard area, and therefore subject to the requirements of the floodplain management ordinance. This is very much an effort that's dictated from the federal government to the state government to the town. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, runs the National Flood Insurance Program, which includes the mapping of the flood hazard areas. About 10 years ago, FEMA started a process of remapping the flood-prone areas for York and Cumberland County. That has been through a series of iterations. About five years ago, the FEMA published draft maps, maybe it was even longer than that now. The town of Hartswell, along with a number of other coastal communities, were concerned about the areas that were included within the special flood hazard areas and what's called the base flood elevation, the elevation to which properties have to be elevated. And so the town, in conjunction with a number of other southern Maine communities, hired the consulting firm Ransom to review those draft FEMA floodplain maps. And Ransom said they thought they were not very sound technically. As a result, the town hired, in conjunction with a number of other communities, Ransom, to essentially redo portions of the FEMA floodplain maps. What you saw over on the table, if you looked, is synthesis of the FEMA, original FEMA proposed floodplain maps amended based upon adjustments that Ransom has proposed. FEMA has essentially said that if the town adopts the new, their new flood insurance rate maps, they will, the next day, approve the amended maps, and then the town will go forward using the maps as amended based upon Ransom's proposed revisions. Those revisions almost universally reduce the area included in the special flood hazard area or reduce the base flood elevation for the area, or a combination of both. Back, I guess I'm going to say now, four months ago, around the first of the year, FEMA announced that the flood insurance rate maps that had been drafted were now final. Those were to be adopted. And the process is sort of, as Amy said in the introduction, that the town, if it wants to remain a participant in the federal flood insurance program, has to adopt the new floodplain management ordinance and the new flood insurance rate maps with the amendment that the town developed. We have a deadline of June 24th or something like that to do that. So the purpose of this public hearing is to, I'm going to say, inform you about what the revised ordinance is. And the revised ordinance is very similar to the existing ordinance. There are not many significant changes in it. There are a couple things that may get discussed tonight that are in there. But the maps are substantially different. And so the town will be holding a special town meeting at a date to be determined by the Select Board in the last row, probably tomorrow night's meeting, to consider adoption of the replacement flood management ordinance and the new flood insurance rate maps. Now, the purpose of this is a public hearing to, that's required by state law on the town ordinance on an amendment change. I'm going to sit here and be the heavy and tell you, if you have concerns about the maps, there is nothing at this point that the town can do. The decision of the town is taken or omitted. There is, however, a process called a letter of map amendment, where if you think that your property is either incorrectly included or excluded from the flood hazard area, or that the base flood elevation that's depicted, you know, your house, your lot is above that, or you have some quarrel with the maps. At this point in the process, there is nothing that the town can do to change the maps. What there is, is if you have a concern, you come in and see Margaret. And Margaret will walk you through the process of submitting a request to FEMA to amend the maps. And if you go into the code enforcement office now, you will find three reminders that fit with individual map amendments where property owners have said, you say the flood elevation is nine, and that my house is in it, but my surveyor says I'm at an elevation limit, and I'm out of it, and so therefore I shouldn't be included. And this process that FEMA has takes care of those. There also are people who may have had letters of map amendment from the old maps. And if you have questions about how those existing lohar supplies your property, Margaret has got the whole book of where those carried forward or where they don't carry forward, and you have to go through the process again if you think the new maps are incorrect. The ordinance is an ordinance that is provided to the town by the state floodplain management office. And the town's ordinance is required to essentially conform to that. I see Tim Forster in the back corner, who may raise an issue about whether one or two of the provisions in the ordinance, the draft ordinance, need to be included. But that is open for discussion. And if people think there are things that should be changed, the town can at least look at those. And so that's where we are at tonight. Hopefully, those of you who came in during the hour before the meeting and had a chance to, perhaps, understand how the new maps impact your property and how that compares to what the 1986 maps do. Now, the chair.
Thank you very much. Let's start with public comments. Please come and, unless the board members have any comments that they'd like to see any. So members of the public who've taken the time to come here tonight, if you have a comment, please come to the microphone and feel free to express yourself. Please state your name.
Kathleen O'Donnell. Question probably for Mark. I'm a little confused. Did the town submit the proposed changes that Ransom, the environmental firm, made, and then they were rejected by FEMA? Is that what I understood?
The answer to that question is, the town and a number of other communities hired Ransom. They prepared, I'm going to call it, proposed revisions to the FEMA maps. They were submitted to FEMA, and those changes were rejected on a technical issue. The technical issue being the unit of measurement, where in some cases, Ransom apparently used meters, and in other cases, they used feet. And as we would learn in about fourth grade mathematics, they did not do the correct conversions. What happened is, the town, the town's appeal, as I understand the process, appealed FEMA's decision not to accept those amendments. And I'm not sure why they did. But what FEMA essentially said is, we agree with the amendments, but because of where we are in the process, we won't revise the maps. But we will accept a request to amend the maps, and that request to amend the maps will take effect the day after the FEMA maps are adopted by the town.
Hi, I'm White Hall of South Hartswell. In January, my family had substantial damage at their South Hartswell cottage. A seawall and a deck were lost, obviously, thanks to the storm. My question is, I'm reading, I guess, page eight here. We would like to replace the seawall. I understand we have to go through the DEP for that. We also would like to replace the deck. And does that have to be at least one foot above base flood elevation?
Here's what I'm going to say. I don't think we should address individual situations tonight. Margaret is sitting right over there, who is a code enforcement officer. And if you see Margaret before the end of the meeting and set up an appointment with her, she will walk you through your specific situation, looking at the maps and looking at your property.
We're in the A-zone. We know that.
Yeah, and she'll walk you through what you can do and what you can't do and what you need permits to do.
Okay, we already know all that.
Oh, all right.
The question is, does it, if we don't get it done before June 24th? We haven't mentioned it, so.
If you've applied, my understanding, and I'm going to look at Margaret. My understanding is that if you apply now and get a permit under the existing maps and the existing elevations, now let's go forward. After the new maps become effective, assuming they're adopted by town meeting, then you have to comply with the new map requirements. Does that answer your question? You're looking at me funny.
Well, I'm sorry. I was just thinking about it. If I get a permit before then, I can do what the old ordinance said.
That is my understanding, Margaret. Not yes or no.
She's not.
That's the current situation. I don't think it's going to change. I don't know how much it would change.
So the answer is, we don't believe, but you need to get yourself in there and talk to Margaret ASAP.
We're waiting on the seawall right now.
Ah, okay.
Matt? Would you identify yourself, please, for the record?
Matt Gilli, County Sheriff. I have some concerns, section G, mainly of the ordinance, start with my interpretation.
I'm sorry, what page are you referring to?
Page seven, that's the bottom, section G. Basically, it says that, my interpretation of it, that if you can do any physical changes, and there's a chance of displacement of water, you're going to have to have an engineer come in and determine whether there's going to be water displaced or not. And you put anything in the water, water is going to be displaced. So that's going to require then a lohar and a seawall. And the state legislator just earmarked $60 million for the commercial fisheries to rebuild their wharf. This is going to render that useless for nine to 12 months. If everybody's going to have to go and hire an engineer before they can do any repairs or anything like that. There's not enough engineers in the state to undertake that type of task to begin with. And there's not enough money to pay these engineers. And then we can go to page 14. I'm not sure who wrote this ordinance, but number seven. It talks about offshore fishing sheds, I don't know of any that are under 200 square feet. Almost every one of them in this town is over 200 square feet. It would not be exempt. So I just don't see where this is coming from. I mean, this is going to, this is going to render repairs completely to a halt for the commercial fishing industry, and we're not eligible for any of that FEMA insurance. So, I mean, we're well not eligible for the insurance, and we're not going to be able to rebuild with the money that they've earmarked for us. Like, this is not going to, that's my comment.
Matt, let me answer your question, if there was that question in there. When you said, where does this language come from? This language comes from the state model ordinance prepared by the state floodplain management office. No, go ahead.
Is that, is that a legislative body? Is that one person? Is there stakeholders that get involved in that process? Because it doesn't sound like it.
The answer to that question is, the people who prepare the model ordinances that the towns are required to conform to our state employees, period.
So there's no stakeholder involved in that drafting of the model?
I can't, I can't speak to that. I don't know the answer to that.
Mona.
Norma Wallace. So I want to expand a little on Matt's concerns. That's the park owner, Redfish Associates, marine infrastructure. We deal with a lot of commercial docks in town, as well as residential structures. We don't by any means do all the work in town, but probably do work on more commercial docks than the average fisherman. As a result, my concerns with this, sorry. My concerns with this are much like Matt's, that the limitations on the size of the structures and the type of structures allowed in the ordinance. And some of this is in the existing ordinance, I understand, but I feel it needs to be revised. Most of the large commercial docks in town, those that serve multiple fishermen, have structures far in excess of what the ordinance is allowing. Many of these docks have no property to speak of attached to the docks. We do not have their structures on their docks. They can't have the structure. I'll give some examples. Hawks Lobster, Full Brooks Wharf, the County Sheriff of Co-Wharf, all three of the lobster wharves in Mackel Cove. And many of the other lobster wharves in town have large bait coolers and fish sheds located on their docks. They have no other location they can put them. And without the size of structure they have, they can't maintain their fishery. They can't handle the kind of bait they need to keep their fishermen going. To say that they are limited to 200 square feet in the event of any substantial repair or replacement will effectively shut them down. They won't be able to handle their hatch or their base they need to operate more than a day at a time. So I'd like to ask the planning board and the town to look at some ways of revising this, even if it's simply to add terminology specifying that existing structures be grandfathered at the size and in the manner that they are currently existing in perpetuity, as long as they're maintained within the commercial fishery. And then also, I have concerns about the requirements for engineering sign-off in any projects in the velocity zone, regardless of size or purpose. That's over a third of the town's shoreline. And from my understanding, the new FUR maps expand on the velocity zone.
That's correct.
That's going to put a significant limitation on people's ability to develop their waterfront in this town, whether it be commercial or residential. As Mr. Gilli said, there are not a lot of engineers that will even review a wooden wharf structure and sign off on it. We've, we've had trouble finding engineers who are willing to sign off on it in a reasonable manner. Their tendency is to, because we're dealing with wooden wharf, they want to double the dimensions of anything you put in in terms of structural members as a general rule of thumb. It does vary in some qualities. So I would highly encourage the town to have a greater opportunity for members of the community to have input on this ordinance before they move forward with it and make some allowances for the working waterfront community.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
The points that you're making are excellent ones. And one of the issues that we have right now is that if we don't adopt this the way it is, we lose our access to the funding. That doesn't mean that we can't look at some other things later on and see what we can do to as workarounds are possible exceptions to it. But that'll have to happen after the ordinance is adopted. And, you know, we share your concerns with that, and anything that we could do to try to figure out how to make that more workable. You know, I understand the engineering thing. That's crazy. People come in to do the engineering, look a lot, had a lot of books, but never put their foot in water, so. So yeah, that's something that we're very concerned with as well, and we'll be addressing that. But we have to do that after we adopt the ordinance. All right?
I have a question of the planner with regard to my colleague's comments. Is it possible that we can't do that, or do we have to adopt this ordinance as it's written and never be able to amend it? If we amend it, will we be in violation?
The answer to that question is... The, the answer to that question is, it depends what section you're talking about. In that some of the language and provisions in the state ordinance is, if you will, mandated by FEMA. Other, uh, sections of the ordinance, uh, I think Tim Forrester standing before you will suggest to you are not required, uh, by FEMA regulations and have been added by the state. So the answer to the question is, if the requirements that are in the ordinance came from FEMA to the state and are therefore mandatory, we probably can't do anything about them or not include them. If, on the other hand, they are provisions that the state included that are not required by FEMA, that is open to discussion. Given June, the likelihood of a June 8th town meeting, there would be an opportunity for, I'm gonna say, the Select Board to take those issues under consideration and to decide... I see Jane sort of nod... I'm not sure whether she's nodding her head up and down or this way. Uh, and decide which, if any, of those things, um, should be revised, that should be discussed with the state as to what the implications are. I think what we want to go away from tonight's meeting with, Madam Chair, is a list of the areas where there are concerns being addressed and what those concerns are that we can then send to the Select Board and say, "Here's what came out of the public hearing. Here are the areas that you should consider before the ordinance is finalized." To go to the chair, maybe.
Marty, go ahead.
So I don't know whether, I don't know who you are, Mr. Forrester. Um, is there any way to know tonight, for example, what Mr. Gilli brought up about conditional use of, you know, the 200 square feet of the shed? Do we know whether that's mandated? Do we know which things have been mandated here? Does anybody know that information? Are you the gentleman that knows that?
I just know that the town of Freeport, at the same meeting last night, they decided to reject it. And sent it to their wire over, redrafting.
You mean the whole thing?
Hold up, hold up, Matt. Let's go to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, did you mean rejected the whole thing and rejected that?
I wasn't at the town meeting, so I can't speak to it. And I know their, their town operates different than ours because they have a town council versus a select board. So they operate a little bit differently than, say, a select board does. But to my understanding, we don't have to adopt this ordinance. We can, we can change it.
We do have to adopt it, actually. We have to adopt it. The question is that I have, can we change it? If we know, can we change it now? Or do we, it doesn't have to go elsewhere?
Yeah.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I think what you're trying to say is, the question is whether it needs to be adopted verbatim or if it can be modified and when and how it can be modified.
That's, that's absolutely correct. And, and the important thing tonight is to identify those areas that people think the town needs to look at modifying and what modifications might be made. Because there is an opportunity potentially between now and a June town meeting to ask that question. What are the things that are mandated? What are the things that the town, uh, can change or not include? And that's the process, that's what this is all about. That's the purpose of the public hearing.
Okay, clearly, we have work to do. The Select Board is meeting tomorrow night. I don't know if the fishing community has a written document outlining specific changes or problems that they see with this ordinance. If you do, we don't have it, but it would be great if you could put something together. Um, the planning board can't look at it tonight since it hasn't been apprised of, of these issues. We certainly support the, the criticisms and the, the problems that have been raised. We, we certainly support looking into it. Um, so before we finish this public hearing, we will, we will agree on how we're going to move forward. But let, let's have people make their comments. And then before we finish this public hearing, we'll have a path forward with the Select Board for tomorrow night.
Uh, I would just like to point out as well that, uh, I'm not sure, but I'm fairly certain that the draft document has not been made publicly available prior to this evening to the town in general. Uh, I say that because I've had a copy for some time. It was provided to me directly by the code office. However, I've spent an extensive amount of time looking through the town's website for a copy of this document to share with other builders and other concerned individuals, and it is not available. So prior to tonight, as far as I know, the only way for anybody to have gotten ahold of this document was to have known about it and gone to the town office and requested it. But there's been no notification made about any of this prior to tonight. Hence the reason of, I'm fairly certain that we have a very limited turnout, which is also gonna make it very difficult to have any kind of document delineating all the issues with this document in time, in any reasonable amount of time, because nobody's had time to go through it word for word, line for line, to look for issues. I think Tim may have a better draft than some of the rest of us. Um, I'm not even that assumption, but we'll find out. Uh, so I think it's, the rapidity with which we have to act on this is going to be a major issue because the document hasn't been readily available. And now we're gonna have a bunch of people trying to scramble to figure out what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
So that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Legally, doesn't the town have to post this for a public hearing?
Yes.
So has it been done? Does anyone, did anyone post it? It is on the website?
Yeah, the document is on the website. Um, it is not, it's not an easy thing to find on. Um, but it is, it is there. I have it right in front of me from, from the website. It's under, uh, Planning, Planning Board, uh...
Pending applications.
Pending applications. So that's where, that's where you can find it.
Okay, that, that, or it's a more discussion because unless you know what the planning board agenda is, you wouldn't know to look, where to look for it. So that's something that I hope the powers that be who are here tonight will put in their notebooks because that doesn't...
Well, now there will be...
Okay. All right, Mr. Forrester, thank you for your patience.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Forrester. I didn't eat dinner, so I'll get some butterflies here, so I'll try to... It's been a long day. All right, there we go. Um, so my name's Tim Forrester. I'm an environmental consultant. I'm a professional weapons scientist and the Director of Coastal Resources for a small consulting firm, Flycatcher. I'm not a resident. I live in Woolwich. But I've been a consultant for 25 years. And I've worked on coastal projects in and around Harpswell and the entire coast domain. There are a couple of things. Um, one, Freeport, thank you. Freeport did not reject everything yesterday. Freeport had several questions, one of which pertaining to Section G and Section Q. So the wharf section and the shoreline section. And they've hired an attorney to pursue what action could the state take or FEMA take if they do not adopt those two sections. Uh, one point I would like to make very clear, and that is, this does start at FEMA and then it goes to the state and then it comes to the town. I met with Sue Baker. I met with FEMA. And you do not have to adopt this verbatim. Um, in my, my email from Katie Rand from FEMA, uh, she specifically stated that cities and towns are, uh, uh... So coming from Sue Baker, cities and towns are being told that they have to adopt this verbatim. I, I approached your planner.
And, and, Tim, Sue Baker is the State Flood Plan Management Coordinator.
Yes, I, I realize that.
No, these people don't know that.
Oh, my apologies.
And Katie, they don't know who Katie is either.
Okay. So Sue Baker, Flood Plan Manager for the state domain. Katie Rand is the FEMA Coordinator that Sue works with. So you have from the federal level to the state level, then it's administered to the towns. I had a Zoom meeting with, with both of them and addressed some of my questions. Um, in a prior email, so, so this all came down to the towns and you're basically told you have to adopt this or else. And in my email directly from Katie, she states that towns do not have to adopt this verbatim. So I, I think that's incredibly important. There are new sections and the town is welcome to challenge it, to ask, and to pursue whether or not all of the sections that are, that are, you're being asked to deal with have to be there. And they don't. FEMA, FEMA has not changed their rules for 30 years. They're still operating under the same standards. This is not coming from FEMA's. The shoreline section and the dock section, it's coming from the state. So it doesn't have to be there. The towns are required to meet the intent of the FEMA standards. And this goes above and beyond. It's, it, it leaves the town in a real pickle here because I, I, most importantly, I, I encourage the town, I encourage people to follow through with this and, and the towns' boards to pursue the flood plan lane management program and to encourage them to, to work with you and address questions and concerns related to those two specific things because they have very, very significant ramifications. If I, if, if you look at the, not the dock section, but the physical changes to the natural landscape, as, as the other gentleman stated, any...
It's, for the members of the board, that in Section G on page seven...
Thank you. I apologize. I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I just have my own words. So under, under that section, Section G, physical changes to the landscape, it says that any alteration, any physical change in any zone A or V requires an engineer's review. And, and as he stated, exactly correct. If I owned a piece of property, I had a set of stairs that went down to the shoreline and I had a little bit of erosion under my stairs and I wanted to put five square feet of riprap underneath there to protect them. Doing the right thing. I would have to ask an engineer if I would alter the base flood elevation by adding that riprap. There's, it's so vague that it encompasses everything. And that falls on your code officer to say, "Well, have, have they done this? Have they met this?" And then if you, if you're lucky enough to find an engineer, your code officers are not engineers, so they just check the box. And you're getting your flood permit issued by them. It's a $50 flood permit that doesn't even cover docks or shoreline stabilization. So you're being held to a standard that doesn't even benefit you. You can't get flood insurance for a dock. You can't get flood insurance for shoreline stabilization. So it's, there, there's some significant fundamental things wrong with this. And it is not the state's ordinance. This ordinance was drafted by two people in the state and one person by FEMA. It should be... It should be regulated no different than Chapter Five, uh, Chapter 1000 of shoreline zoning. The legislature should adopt it. It should be open for public comment. And then comes to the states to be, uh, comes to the towns to be administered, where the towns can be as strict but no less than the state minimum standard. And that's not what's happened here. Two people drafted it from the state, one from FEMA. No one's had comment. I, I never get to comment on any of this stuff. And, and it's, it's not in the statute. So that gives the state the absolute power to say what happens here. In my meeting with Sue Baker, she, I, I raised a point about temporary versus permanent docks and velocity zones. And my point was, I can be in a V zone. I can hit, take a rampant float in its ledge and completely remove it in the off season. There's nothing there when the storms flow through. She agreed. That was a good point. What if we just said permanent docks in the velocity zones? So she pulled up the state's ordinance and she read and inserted permanent docks in velocity zones. And I, I thought to myself, "Holy smokes. I just changed the state's model ordinance." That's not right.
Mr., Mr. Forrester, Tim, has any, uh, of the coastal towns adopted this with changes that might be what you're suggesting?
So I've come before Harpswell. I've come before, um, Brunswick. I went to Brunswick Planning Board where I spoke. The, um, Resource Commission Resource Manager, um, said, "I agree with everything Mr. Forrester has to say. However, we're being told by the state that we have to adopt this verbatim and ban their rubber standard." So I got nowhere in, in Brunswick. Freeport, they've raised a lot of questions. And I, I've spoken with a couple of other towns as well. Um, but, but Brunswick has adopted the ordinance verbatim.
Tim, could, could, and maybe the chair should slap my hands when you're saying this, but we can't do anything about the state process and how the state develops the model ordinance. And I understand the background. But I think what would be most helpful to the town is to identify areas in the draft ordinance that's before us that you think need to be reconsidered, reviewed, that goes on the punch list to look at.
Thank you, Mark. That's, that's...
I, I would agree.
That's streamlined, I hear.
And I would add, um, if it would be helpful for us to work more closely with neighboring communities who are raising the same issue, there is power in numbers. And so if it would behoove, uh, someone representing the town of Harpswell to contact the town of Freeport and see if there could be some coordinated effort, um, I think that would be a good idea. And perhaps...
I agree as well.
Yeah.
Things, things are happening at a higher level. Um, you know, the commissioners of the state, DMR, DEP, Fish and Wildlife, Marine Resources, Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry, who this, this actually falls under. All the commissioners met last week, um, and Sue is working with them. There is an incredible amount of pressure on them right now to, to change what's happening here. Uh, I think that's fantastic. What concerns me is the process. And in that, if every time, and, and Mark can correct this, but if every time you need to make a change in this ordinance, does it then have to go back to town meeting?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Is the town ordinance...
So you're gonna be, you're gonna be stuck with this unless you can get... And so I, I feel like the town, if, if the town's people have the concerns that they need to approach, someone needs to approach Sue Baker and someone needs to say, "This is what we think it should be. You need to run that past FEMA and see if they will accept it." Because they haven't changed in 30 years. So why, what, where is this coming from? Why has this change been done? And it, it, it's so much more complicated than that. Because if you say you have, you need to ask an engineer to, to look at the shoreline and see if you're gonna affect the base flood elevation, that is no easy task. And there's no, there are no guidelines. There's nothing to go by. I've spoken with several engineers and there's no standard. There's no standard review there. It's the same with docks. You could have Redfish who builds one way, Custom Floats who builds another. They're both gonna build a great product, but there's no standard that says one's right, one's wrong, or they're both right, or they're both wrong. So it, there, there... So, there's still a lot of work that needs to happen, and it's going to be really unfortunate, because the people are correct. Come June, if you don't have an engineer, you're dead in the water.
But it's also true that come June, if we don't have something on the books, then the average
That's right.
...will not be able to get a mortgage, and they'll be out of luck.
That's right.
So, we are caught between a rock and a hard place here, but only if we allow ourselves to be. It is possible for us to chew gum and walk at the same time, which means we may have to pass this thing at town meeting, and then get our ducks in a row and amend it. So, but we can't let this rush make us overlook things. We need to do a good job of it.
I don't disagree that you're caught between a rock and a hard place. And it was interesting to hear in Brunswick that there were 30 people who have flood insurance, and there are, that participate in the flood program through FEMA. That's for the entire, that's all of Brunswick. I would be really curious to see what that is in Harpswell. You have X number of people who are in the flood program who benefit by this advantage. Well, you have every other waterfront property owner who wants to stabilize a shoreline or have a dock who's impacted by it. So, you are in a bit, but you don't have to accept it verbatim. You have between now and then to make changes and to inquire. And it's really unfortunate that you get pigeonholed into this thing, and this is where you're at.
Thank you very much, really appreciate your coming to this.
Thank you.
I'd love to get... I know we have comments from you in writing, but we would appreciate any further comments you have.
Hi, everybody. Monique Coons, Ors Island, Dominican Fisherman's Association. I'm making sort of a comment adjacent to the topic, just for an FYI. Commercial fishing exists on private properties in the state of Maine. All of the commercial fishing properties that I know that have flood zone insurance after the January storms were denied their claims and then dropped. So, I understand that that's like a big thing for the town mortgages. I have a mortgage, I understand. But I think that that's something that commercial fishing businesses have dealt with pretty dramatically over the past few months, and I just thought it was worth it.
George Prince, Harpswell. I'd like to thank Mr. Forrester for coming tonight and enlightening us. I'm not nearly as educated as he is, so my comment will probably not be nearly as polite. We start using language like "the ordinance has to pass" before it even goes to vote. I mean, we have to pass it to amend it? Why don't we amend it before we vote on it? We're using the language that "has to pass". Why bother to vote? Have we gone straight from democracy to communism? Why don't we just give the hierarchy all the power and say, "Do whatever you want"? So, let's not use the language "it has to pass". Thank you.
We hear you, but there's a lot of work to do between now and June, so if we could get it done. And there are also time limits for public hearings, and it's difficult in a town meeting to comply with the legal time limits, and we'll do our best to do what we can. Your point is well made, George.
Allison Hopps, Cundy, Sager. I'm here with a lot of state concerns, too. And I'm just going to reiterate this again to the town. Communication is so bad in this town. I shouldn't be standing feeling like I have to fight for the livelihood to be here. And when Mr. Wallace says to you that essentially by just adopting this the way that it is, that it would make many of us out of compliance, and you're just like, "No, we have to adopt it, and then we'll do..." I mean, it's a little insulting. Like, you're just like, "Whatever, you guys are just going to be out of compliance, because we have to do this." And I mean, please don't come here not knowing the answers. I can't believe you guys are asking us. I came here to get answers from you guys. Why don't you know the answers? Why don't you know the towns that are looking into this stuff? Why the hell are we doing this? We're going to displace water. We live on a coastal community. Sailboats displace water. Did anybody even ask? We're just like all over and just do whatever. I get it, it's the federal government. We just doing it for dollars? I mean, we know what that's called. I hope I don't have to say it. Engineers are costly, and you know Mrs. Holland's great, she has one, and I'm sure there's plenty of people that have money in this town that can be like, "I got an engineer", and that's great. That's great. I'm glad that you do. But there's so many people in this town that are, I am not going to go get an engineer to rebuild my wharf. Do you know how much I already have to do to do what I do to have a wharf? You know how much the state and the government, federal government, is already in my business all the time? And this is just another layer, and none of you guys even have asked any questions. And then I could find the two letters that are on the website that's to this town that we are behind. We were out of compliance essentially with what was going on. Why were we not on top of this sooner? Why are we waiting till the last minute to give this to us? We've got less than two months to do something with this? That's so unfair. You think I can go look through all those maps and know what the hell is even going on? This is ridiculous, and he's not wrong. Mr. Wallace is totally right. Your website is a complete crap show, that every time I come to a meeting, I have to dig and dig and dig, call somebody. You guys don't even know. You don't even know where stuff is. It's discouraging, once again. Like, who is looking out for us? There's so much stuff that's wrong in this. Like, this is your comp plan that you guys just did. Harpswell's critical infrastructure includes town buildings, landings, boat launches, piers, wharfs, recreation fields, non-developed land, and roads, which make up the largest sector. The largest sector. We're just going to hunker on it. I can't even believe that you're just going to go to the town and just do a meeting with no further input from anybody. That's why all of us are here. This is concerning to us, our livelihoods, history and heritage to this town is going to be devastated over what's happening on every side to commercial fishing. Not just the recreational side of people doing stuff. And you're going to sell us out over something we don't even benefit from anyway.
Okay, I just have to ask you to be respectful, please. There's no one here that's going to sell you out.
I'm saying the way this process has been done is selling us out. You're just like, "You're going to do the ordinance because we can't get this because of this." That's a sellout to me. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. This is how I feel, and I get to have my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are doing the best that we can as well. We aren't paid to be here. We are given, working with the information that we've been given. We have issues with the town's website as well. We are, in many ways, in the same boat as you are. We're doing the best with what we have, and we really care for the town, which is why we volunteered to be on this board. So, with all due respect, let's try to respect each other and be nice to each other. Because no one has it out there anymore. Let's just try to maintain the peace here. If it's possible. Please state your name.
Linda Whitehall, Sandy, Harpswell, yeah. I, listening to all this, I get it, because you know, I understand. Does the town know how many people would be affected by not being able to get flood insurance? It doesn't have wharves, am I understanding that? Not commercial wharves, but if I had a personal wharf, whatever it is.
We can't get any insurance coverage on any wharf structure. And if FEMA ensures you can't get commercial insurance on any wharf structure, here it is. If you can't get it, you're paying for policy that's never going to pay up.
We have this intersectionary, but my question is, do you know how many? The gentleman earlier said 30 people in Brunswick had flood insurance.
We do not know. We do not know the answer to that question. That's a great question. I don't know if anyone here does know, but it's a good question. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, what else?
Just a correction, and that is, the federal flood insurance program involves more than wharves. It involves residential structures, accessory structures. It's not just wharves. And it's, and the ability to not obtain federal flood insurance for a structure can limit the ability to sell that property, because any, almost any mortgage on a property that's in a flood hazard area has to obtain flood insurance. So, the issue in terms of the town goes beyond the issue of how wharves and docks are impacted.
Mr. Chairman, but that being said, I still think it's a useful piece of information to know how many people actually carry flood insurance. The example from Brunswick, as I said, it was a very small number of people. So, I think that's an important point of information, but the other reason, the other reason I want to comment. So, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that you pass it and then amend it. How long would it take to amend it? Apparently, we don't even know at this point what is amendable and what is not amendable. So, that would mean, once it's passed, the regulations are in effect until it's amended. And unless you have a timetable for amendment that's going to protect people, you could be delaying work for quite a long time. So, do you know how long it would take to amend it and what the process would be?
I mean, I'm going to say the answer to that depends upon the select board. Any amendment to the ordinance would require that it be approved by a town meeting vote. And what the, you know, it's up to the select board if they wanted to schedule a special town meeting to consider amendments. They...
Sorry, sorry, because, do we know what is amendable?
No, we do not. And as I said earlier, I think the most important thing tonight, from my perspective, is that we are clear about where you all think there are concerns. Because if we know where there are concerns, we can then look at those questions. For instance, Tim Forrester has presented us with a piece that says he believes that there are two parts in the ordinance that don't need to be there. I can't say tonight whether that's correct or not correct. But if we have those, we will look at the answer to that question. There has been a third and maybe a fourth area on my list that have been raised that we'll go back the size of fish houses and whatever, and look at whether those are able to be changed or not. And if they're able to be changed, then the town has to decide how it wants to change them.
My last question is, is the June 24 date, is that a movable date? Is it, what is the...
That date, I think, is set by the federal government, if I'm correct. And we have someone here who on the board wants to make a comment, so when you're finished, we'll add the last comment.
So, okay, but just because a date is set by the federal government?
That's what I understand.
My question is, does that mean that you can't go to the federal government and ask for a delay for the following reasons?
I don't know the answer to that. Thank you.
If the gentleman was correct, Mark. If Mr. Forrester was correct, that the FEMA program hasn't changed in 30 years, somebody had said that, maybe you said that, what would be wrong with adopting the existing ordinance with an update just for the new maps? And whatever is different in the new model, we would wait until the state figures out it's apt. Because on the day that the town adopts the new floodplain management ordinance or amends it, the state has to certify that the town's ordinance meets the state requirements.
That doesn't give us any choice.
It gives us no choice. Well, that's essentially what I'm, and so, here's my answer to that, Howard. And this is sort of climbing out on a limb. If the select board sets a date for a special town meeting in the first couple of weeks of June, there is an opportunity to try and resolve the status of the three or four issues that have been raised. If the changes involve deleting things, that's pretty simple. If they involve trying to change things that are in the ordinance that involve how big should be a lobster shack be, or how that's dealt with? If that's able to be changed, that becomes a little more complex.
Doesn't it matter whether it was in the original one, or what exists?
Yeah, that's already in the existing language. But let me go through. So, there is a small window of opportunity that would allow changes to be drafted and a public hearing held, probably by the select board, on the revised ordinance. It may have to be held by the planning board because of state law and planning board's role in ordinance changes. That could be done, and they could be available for town meeting. That's a fast track. It's possible to do. And it's really up to the last row, the select board, and Christie's sitting back there, to say, "Do they want to try and do that? Do they want to adopt and try and amend if that's the direction? That's not within the control of the planning board."
The planning board does have business that it has to attend to tonight, and I want to move on with that. I have, map these up, state your comments, and then I'd like to make a motion or at least lay out where I think the direction is that we need to go. So, Mr. Gillis, please.
Do I need to state my name again?
Yes.
Amen. Gillis. I think the fishing community's major concern with this whole process is, when we had those two major storms back in January, many of us sitting here sat down with town officials, state officials, even some federal officials, and our biggest concern coming out of those storms was this: red tape. And they assured us, Pat Keller assured us, the town assured us, the governor assured us, our federal delegation assured us, there would be no red tape. Well, here it is. Great big piece of red tape right across it. So, I mean, that's where, I guess I'm just trying to justify some of our frustrations. And I would hope that the select board would have a special town meeting and a special select board meeting to address some of these concerns, because this is the red tape that we were concerned about, and it's come to fruition exactly like we said it was going to.
Yeah, totally, totally get that.
Madam Chairman, before you make your motion...
I'm not going to make my motion yet. I'm going to the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please come to the microphone and, Mr. Wallace, state your name.
Norman Wallace, again. I just want to point out that so far tonight, we're just talking about the portions of this ordinance that affect the commercial fishing community and the working waterfront. We're not talking about, or we haven't talked about, any of the other issues potentially in the ordinance for everybody else in the town. We've talked about two sections of the ordinance. It's 13 or 14 pages long. I think the only way... I think the only way you're going to find out where the issues are in this ordinance as written is to have a special meeting for this ordinance, to go through it line by line, section by section, and discuss it. In order to have that meeting, we need to know what portions of it are actually mandated by FEMA and in what manner. What portions of it are being mandated by the state and under what authority they're mandating them? If it's just two or three administrators that wrote a sample ordinance that are saying that you have to do this, what's our legal backing to do that? And we need to base our modifications on this ordinance, on those, that meeting and that review. To proceed any further with this ordinance, I feel will be a major mistake and it's just going to cost the town and its citizens time and money and heartache. So.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is TJ Watson, from Cundys Harbor. I own and operate TJ Watson Property Maintenance, Harpswell Marine Builders, and my family has been in business in this town with Watson's general store since 1845. In 1978, our whole wharf was destroyed by a storm that was equal to the storm that we just saw. My uncle has firsthand recollection of it. He's still very sharp in his mind, and everything he says I listen to. When my family approached the town in 1978, long before I was born, they were told that if they needed permits, if they needed any help getting anything rebuilt, that the town would deal with it after the fact. They just wanted to see the townspeople rebuild and get back to work. Because we're a working community, we're a working waterfront, and everything that's being laid out before us right now, we're being strong-armed into. And if we don't fight back from it, we're all going to regret it. It's a slippery slope. Water displacement, I mean, birds landing in the water, windmills going in the ocean, you drop a piling in to, you know, to support your wharf, you got to hire an engineer. Let's get an engineer in here. Well, here's another $1,500 and nine months to a year on your project add. So it's not great. Everything seems like it's more of a struggle than it needs to be. And I wish that the townspeople, code's office, the select board, all of you sitting in front of us, I mean, you guys are our last line of defense. And if you don't have our backs, like Alison spoke about earlier, we depend on you guys. And Matt's involvement in the community, Jerry, George, all these guys that are sitting here, we're not here because we want to be. We'd rather be sitting at home around a campfire telling fishing tales, you know? We don't want, yeah, I know, everybody, like, we've got, I've got a four-year-old kid at home, we've all got families, none of us want to deal with this crap. I mean, when somebody tells you, you're going to sign this, or you're not going to get this and that, from my experience with my property maintenance business, I've worked for multimillionaires, billionaires even, I'm smack dab in the middle of everything that goes on. I'm a commercial fisherman myself, I'm an entrepreneur, and I'm a family man, and I'm a, I'm a good part of our community. And I feel like on every front that I'm facing lately, it's just more and more turbulence. And we don't, we just don't need it anymore. And I think all that we're going to do, if we sign this bill into effect, is you're going to, you're going to create a rogue town. And you're going to have a group of people that are going to say, well, screw the town, we're going to do what we want to do. And then it's going to be the state and the federal government that have to come in and seize our properties and do everything else. And I hate to see it get to that point. I love my town, I take a lot of pride in this town, I'm a sixth generation, my son is a seventh, and I think we need to do a better job. And that's it. And I know you guys are all trying. And, you know, we're, we're in a big battle right now. It seems like nobody wants us here unless you've got pockets lined with money. So I'm going to go down kicking and screaming. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you very much. I want to, I just want to say, I think that Harpswell is together with the commercial fishermen, for the most part. There are some who, who maybe aren't, I don't know anyone who isn't. I want to thank you for coming and voicing your concerns. This is, this is what we are as a community, and we have to listen to each other, and we have to share with each other. And, you know, this is like the last place that you can come and actually see the people that you're doing business with. So I, I thank you for coming, it's a pleasure to, to listen to you and to have you here. And Dave, you got to make sure-
I just want to make sure that you guys put your, your issues in writing.
Dave, you're, you're serving me, I'm going to ask for the same thing. Very much.
Amy, can, can I just-
I'm not sure, no, I don't think so.
All right, that's fine. Well, what, what I've heard tonight is concern about three sections of the ordinance specifically. I have heard concern about Section G on page seven, physical changes to the natural landscape.
I heard that too.
And it has been suggested that that is not required by FEMA, and is one of the areas that the town should look at as to whether that needs to be included and whether it wants to include it. I also have heard about, on page 13, going on to page 14, under our coastal floodplain section three, C, the requirement for a professional engineer or architect-
Mr. Ironman, I'm going to ask that you put all of this in writing and go to the select board.
Well, I would, I'd really like to put it in the record of the, of the public hearing. And, and it's, it's short. And there, Section C, it, it has been questioned about the need for a registered professional engineer. And on page 14, item seven, conditional use, there were questions about the limitation on the size of lobster sheds and fishing sheds and how they're treated at 200 square feet. Those are the three areas that might not say were raised, that, that the town should specifically look at. And if we want to, you know, deal with the state on, are there other things the town could change without jeopardizing town certification, that's fine. But I heard those three things for us to look at.
I, I heard those two. Mr. Chipman, do you want to say something?
No.
Okay, you just, okay.
I just want to make sure that we know exactly what they want.
Mr. Chipman wants to make sure that we know exactly what the, the commercial fishermen are interested in. Okay, so, excuse me, any, any, any other comments by anyone?
Last one, Mike, again.
Yeah, you do, thank you.
Someone pointed out earlier that you haven't heard from residential people. I'm residential, but I don't know what, and I'm not sure they know what the concerns are. So, I'm kind of mad in my mouth, I can have another hearing and make sure people know about this.
Thank you, thank you. What the, and I heard that too, what the planning board is actually being asked to do tonight is to make a recommendation to move this forward to be approved by the select board, and I don't think that we are there. The, there are, there are five things that I heard from people. One is that fishing families need to put their comments and their criticisms and their suggestions in writing to the best that you can. Help us to help you by outlining your concerns, because we want to know what they are, we want to hear them. So find some way to get together and make sure that you really put your concerns in writing. That will be a first step in helping us to help you. That doesn't mean you have to cover every single little thing, and if you leave something out, that you can't come back and address it again. Just do the best you can now with what we have. So that's the first thing. Second thing is to ask Mr. Forrester, who has already put his comments in writing, to further elaborate on things based on what he's heard tonight, what he heard from Freeport, and to get those in writing. The fourth thing is to see if we can get our town government to coordinate with other coastal governments like Freeport, to join forces and use the power of numbers. And they, they also probably have, are thinking of things that we're not thinking of, and we can incorporate what, what their criticisms and comments are, and they can incorporate ours. So if we can do that together, that will help us. The fourth thing is to, to get, to get these comments to the town attorney in a really timely manner. That's going to have to happen. The fifth thing is, which was mentioned by Mr. Wallace, this is a biggie, is to get us to sit down and really go page by page through this thing. That is something that I think the select board is going to have to determine whether they want to do that. I think, I don't think it's a bad idea at all. And I think the planning board would be happy to do its part in making that happen. So our issue, our issue is whether to forward this to the select board with a recommendation. And my, Mark, I'm going to be asking for you to give some guidance on this, but my suggestion is based on those, those five suggestions, that we forward this to the select board without a motion to, suggestion to approve, but to do that further work and to figure out a, a new timeframe within which we can get as many of those things done as possible before we move it to a town vote.
You probably said this, but do we know how to find out what's mandated and what isn't? Because it seems like the sooner we have that information, I hate to think of people breaking their heads trying to think of things to change, and then we find those things are not changeable. How can we find that out? Is that on your list? I'm sorry, I must have missed it.
It is on my list, it was to get together with the town attorney.
The town attorney will know that?
The town attorney should know that, and, and if the town attorney doesn't know that, the town attorney should find out.
Madam Chairman, the town attorney has already written a frequently asked question sheet that's in our packets, that's on the website. They know, they have people that are aware of this, they should be able to answer these questions quickly.
Thank you.
Amy, I just want to thank you for your comments and ask you where you'd like us to submit this written testimony and how.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, George?
Where, where and how should we submit this written testimony? Online, hard copy at the town, or enter, please?
That's a great question. I would, I would submit it to Mark and copy the select board on it, copy Christie on it and the select board on it.
Online, or hard copies?
I would say online and have a hard copy. Thank you.
George, send it to me as an email with a natural door wire.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Plan, Mr. Ironman, is my, is my suggestion to make for that motion, to send this to the side hand without approving it, but to take action on the five items that I listed? Is that, is that something that would satisfy our town's right now needs of this?
I would say, and I'm sort of looking at the back row, I think the answer to that question is yes. It may need to come back to the planning board for another public hearing to meet the state requirement. But I think many of these questions that have been raised tonight, I would put in the realm of policy questions as opposed to technical questions. And I think the appropriate body, from my perspective, to answer those, do we want to venture into the area of making changes or trying to make changes, should rest with the select board, not with the planning board. So I think sending it to the, to the select board and letting them figure out how they want to proceed is probably the, the best option. And I would point out, the, the town in this process has had legal counsel, participates in a group of communities already that were involved in the morrow and work. And so that, I would college, sharing process already is in existence, and there's already legal counsel involved in that.
Excellent, good, then, the way, the way has been taken. So I make that motion, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. And I would just offer the select board from the planning board, if you need us to meet again, if you need any assistance from the planning board as you go about looking at this, we'd be happy to help you.
Madam Chair, before we go away, I saw Christie nodding in the back. I think if the- No, that if there are substantial changes to the ordinance, I think it will need to come back to the planning board for a second public hearing. The public hearing probably requires at least 13 days' notice. And so I think the planning board might want to think about its availability for a special planning board meeting to hold a public hearing, you know, like Memorial Day, weekend, or some such thing.
Well, so I'm Christie, the town administrator, and really, in all seriousness, we want to get to work on this, we want to get the answers that people are looking for. We have the same town attorney as Freeport, so we'll be reaching out as soon as tomorrow about what changes we could, you know, possibly make. I do think Mark Ironman's correct that if there are substantive changes that the town wants to make, that this planning board may need to have another public hearing. So I think you want to set your next public hearing tonight, so we can get back to it. I mean, that could be canceled if we don't need to. But if the town of Harpswell is going to propose some changes to the model ordinance, then it's likely to be considered substantive, and the planning board would be required to hold another public hearing.
Thank you.
How much time do we have?
So I do want to correct Mark on one thing. The federal government has notified us that these new maps and the ordinance accompanying the maps needs to be adopted by June 20th. So the town can hold a special town meeting prior to June 20th. You know, I think Freeport has a town council, Brunswick has a town council, different form of government can work more quickly at times on these types of issues, but this is, you know, the town meeting is our legislative body in Harpswell.
Can we move backwards from when we have to, the timeline, you know? So we have time to have a public hearing, make a recommendation, and the select board put it on the board.
I think you should consider setting a public hearing like three weeks from tonight.
We, the, the only thing about three, three weeks from tonight would be the regular planning board meeting, the, the ordinance changes, and the ad for the public hearing would have to be available by next Tuesday. Would have to run in the paper by next Tuesday. Everything would have to be wrapped up and done.
Maybe four weeks out, you know? It, it is a tight timeline.
Yeah, and, and we're now down to, Margaret, when is the, the switch at the Times Record to Tuesday, Friday publication?
I think that they are not going to be printing from the 13th to the 17th. So the last printing will be on the 10th, and then they'll start printing again on the 17th, they go to their- the 17th, and go to their Tuesday for a rotation.
Starting on the 17th of May?
Yes.
So if we were going to hold a public hearing, the, the public hearing notice requirements for ordinance amendments are, there has to be an ad at least 13 days prior to the hearing, and a second one not sooner than seven days to the public hearing. So there's a window in there, and the, the reason this becomes critical is that if the, um, Times Record is only going to publish twice a week, then we have to schedule. I'm looking at my calendar, uh, and I think the 15th would be tight. Um, the 22nd would be the next Wednesday after that. That would be the Wednesday leading into, uh, Memorial Day, and that would probably be the, the last reasonable time to hold a public hearing in time to have a, a June town meeting. So, so the choice would sort of be the 15th, which would mean everything would need to be wrapped up by next Tuesday, or the 22nd, uh, with everything wrapped up by a week from Tuesday.
Do you have a working planning meeting?
That's correct. Well, you could do the public hearing as part of the regular planning board meeting. But that would mean that all of the questions would have to be answered, and any proposed revisions to the ordinance drafted and available by next Tuesday.
So I think the 22nd makes more sense.
Yeah. Now, the next question is, Ms.?
My question. Go ahead.
Okay, the, the other thing I would suggest, after, after listening to the comments here, is on the front page of the town's website to provide a direct link to the proposed ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah. Very, very good. There's a section, what, right on the, uh, the, 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 the question. I just want to get my-
Yep. I, I, I was just going to say, while you have the members of the planning board here, it might be, uh, wise to question their availability on the 22nd, so we have a forum, because that is the leading in the Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, I, I can be here. Howard, Howard will not be here. I'll be here, okay, we'll, we'll be here.
We do. We will have a forum.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you again.